All right, we want to call the Rutherford County School Board April 4th work session to order. We have already done our pledge of allegiance and our moment of silence during our special called meeting previously, so we'll move right on to the approval of the agenda. Any questions, comments, or concerns on the agenda, members of the board? Okay, next item is approval of the consent agenda. Are there any questions, comments on the consent agenda items?
Yes, ma'am. Under routine bids, it says substitute teacher services. Is that something you're going to explain to us?
Yes, we looked at that handout initially, you know, gave you the four different companies that applied. We had ten people on our committee, and so since the last time we talked about what each vendor provided, you know, gave a summary of what ESS, Advantage, Kelly, and Edges Staff provided, and gave that handout to you. What this is, is a result of the survey. We had ten on our committee, and then Joanne had collected those and put the overall score, so what I placed on your table tonight was the overall score, and that's with the rubric that we use to evaluate the different companies. Last time we did this, we had eight companies to make bids. This time we had four, and so we selected the top two, so that, and the way we put in our RFP this time is so that they knew we were looking for multiple vendors, and we'll be looking for a vendor for the Murfreesboro Eagleville area, and then the Smyrna Laverne. The strategy on the selection is Advantage having the highest amount of points, feeling like they would be the best since they have many years of experience, and based out of Murfreesboro, the Murfreesboro and Eagleville section, and then ESS, who also does subcontracting the hard-to-fill schools in Metro as well as Lebanon, that they would be better for our northern end of the school district, because they have an office and different recruitment strategies that are already set up. Edges Staff is not, if you remember from that handout, they're not in Tennessee. They're mostly in ten different states out in the Midwest, and then Kelly is finally in Tennessee as of December, splitting a contract with Advantage for Memphis.
Who was on this committee?
Okay, so on a committee was Lynn Pater, Joanne Robichaud, Dana Nichols representing the elementary schools, Larry Creasy representing the high schools, Chris Marshall, myself, Carrie Holm representing the middle schools, Karen Ladd, and Debbie Castillon-Peayrow, and Mr. Bowdery.
Good representation.
Yes. Dr. Anthony, may I ask, is this, we've, since I've been on the board, we've looked at substitute teacher contracts twice before, I believe. Is this the same process?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The last time we went through this, it was three years ago, and our top contenders were, at the time, the company that's now changed to Staff EZ, Advantage, and ESS. Staff EZ did not put a contract in this time, and so it appears again that our top two contenders were ESS and Advantage.
Okay, and the contracts, now everything's going to be different, because previously we, as a system, have used one service provider. Now we're going to use two different service providers, so are the contracts different? This seems, this seems like it's, in the previous, it's been on the regular agenda, not the consent agenda.
I asked Ms. Pater that. I said, you know, the question is going to be, why is it on the consent agenda? And I told Mr. Rock that today, I said, she explained to me that all RFPs for the last twenty years since Mr. Odom have always been on the consent agenda, so she didn't want to deviate from that, but knew that you all had the power to pull it off of the agenda, because I, initially, when, after she tallied the votes, I said, that's going to be an issue, because we want to talk about, she said, you can talk about whatever you need to talk about. I said, that's okay, but she said it's the last twenty years since Mr. Watson, all RFPs go on the consent.
So, and when we did this the last time, it wasn't an RFP process? We've changed the process?
It was, and then we pulled it off. I don't, I don't know if you remember, three years ago, we looked at it for three additional months, and we're trying to decide, because Staff EZ had gone bankrupt in the northern state, and we're trying to become their own company for each state, and so they came and spoke to us. So we had them come and talk to us about what that process looked like before we could make a decision, and then reweighed that information to get a final vote.
If it's all right with members of the board, I think this is significant enough that we move it to the regular agenda, pull it off the consent agenda, and then I would ask if we can, we can look a little more closely. We, through COVID, I don't have to tell you this, you know very well, we struggled to fill our substitute teaching requests, and so I'd like to look at this more, more closely before we, we vote on it. So, can we put this on the, members of the board, would you object to moving this to? Okay.
No, that would be great.
And then, and then if you can help us with information at the board meeting on fill rates, and more closely, the objective dividing the county up is something new to us, so we'd like to see what their goals are and how they're going to approach recruiting, and we're also adding a new company, so do they have a footprint at all here in Rutherford County, or are they starting from scratch?
They do in Tennessee, but not in Rutherford County.
Do they serve Davidson County at all, or Solon County?
Yes, there are seventeen hardest-to-fill schools, and they are in multiple schools in the state of Tennessee.
Wonderful. Thank you, I appreciate it. Any other questions on the consent agenda? If not, we'll move on to the next item, number six, Mr. Sprowl.
All right, memorandum of understanding between Rutherford County School Board and the state of Tennessee to enroll in the state of Tennessee local education health insurance plans. Is there someone who wants to speak on that?
Yes, sir. Tonight you have the outreach director and the onboarding director for the state of Tennessee plans. In your tab, you have the actual memorandum of understanding that Rutherford County, the school board would vote on after the employee vote is, is finished. If we have at fifty percent plus one of eligible employees vote for this, then of course, it goes to you as the board to, to vote. These two state representatives here tonight, if you have any questions on the memorandum of understanding, or anything going forward, you know, once the vote's taken, you know, just basically the timeline of onboarding our employees and pre-sixty-five retirees up to January 1, 2023, which will be the go-live date for our board employees to go onto the state plans. So they're here tonight if you have questions.
Where are we on the vote?
At this moment, we're at twenty-seven forty-seven.
Okay.
We have approximately fifty-eight hundred employees, which means we need about twenty-nine hundred as a minimum. Three thousand would be a nice cushion at least to have, but we've gained four-hundred-and-fifty participants today, so I think we'll pass that process.
Good.
Definitely before Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, members of the board? We do have representatives here if you have any questions about insurance this evening. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item.
All right, number seven, spotlight, Central Magnet. Magnet School, Be in the Zone. Presentation will be on Thursday.
Thank you. Number nine?
All right, number nine, high school visits. Mr. Cole Young has requested plan to visit the five high schools that are being considered for additions. All board members and the county commissioner are encouraged to attend.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
Yeah, I just think that any time in the past, if we had questions or concerns about additions or school buildings being built, we typically have toured those facilities. I think it'd be a good opportunity for us to do that. As far as when, you know, we typically do this on a Saturday, but I don't oppose us doing it during the weekday. It's just most trouble for me to get off on a Saturday is a Friday, so it doesn't matter to me. I would like for us to tour these five schools, and I'd also like to look at any property that Mr. Lee might have for us to look at. If I know that there's some talk about John L. Beatty's property, so if there's a way that we could set that up in that schedule, I'd even like for us to tour that. How much time would you need to coordinate that?
Well, if we're all going to ride together, I can get a couple of vans. If the board all wants to ride together, if it's going to be a Saturday, I'm just going to be honest, I'm not available the next two. I've got, well, actually, the next three. Anytime during the week, yes. I apologize, the next three weekends for me. My children have got plans to go out of town, and I'm the grandparent, and I've got kids.
You're excused.
Priority.
Just being honest. But during the week, I can set it up anytime. I almost agree with Mr. Young. It may be, I don't know what everybody else's job looks like. Today's world, Saturday's not much better than during the week, but...
I prefer during the week as well.
Okay.
Be a problem getting into any of the schools during the week?
Oh, during the week, I can get us in, and we can set a schedule up with the principals and let them know approximately what time we would be there. We could do the three on this end and make a swing toward the south end and go by a couple of pieces that are up for discussion, or have been brought to us recently, and discuss those as we go. I think we could get to three, the three of Murfreesboro, Oakland Riverdale, and Blackman probably in the morning, take a break for lunch, and then see the couple of properties and look at Smyrna and Laverne in the afternoon, and probably wrap up around three-thirty, four o'clock, if that works with the board.
Sounds like he's got it all figured out, huh?
That was easy enough.
I did, but, but I, I think it's, it's doable, and then we could publish the schedule, you know, if...
There's one other issue, testing starts when, Dr.?
Testing starts April 18th, so to avoid any disruptions to the school.
Next week?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I can make a call to the principals, and you can coordinate with me and just let them know what time you can be there.
Do y'all have a day next week that works better for you all, looking at a calendar? Or do you want to think about it, let's pick a date Thursday night?
Yeah, let's all think about it, and just pick a date Thursday night. And I'd also like to ask that the principals go ahead and gather their talking points and show us what their issues are at each location. I think it'd be good to have those at a time.
Okay.
So maybe it would be best if everybody, I hate to do this to you again, if all the members of the board between now and Thursday would shoot a couple of date options to Mr. Lee, and we can pick one that maybe most are available for, and then we can announce that date at our meeting on Thursday.
Okay, so the thought would be, and I'm just throwing this out while we're having discussion, meet at eight here, and we could, if we did an hour, allowed an hour for travel and to get there, that would be eight to nine, nine to ten, ten to eleven, so we could probably allow a little travel time in between, but we could get, we don't want to get bogged down. You could end up taking all day at each school, which I don't think is really the intent. The intent's to, as I say, hit the high spots, just to kind of see what our issues are, and then we could break for lunch, and then do the other properties in the afternoon and still be through by three, three-thirty.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Sounds bad, but that's okay. I don't have a day. I don't know what I'm going to do. We have capacity interviews for the charter schools on one day next week, and, you know, I'm just... That's the fourteenth, right, Dr. Solon, capacity?
You want me to allow a special tour for you? I'm, I'm not, normally I would be picking with you.
You would be facetious normally, yes.
I'd be sincere. If it doesn't work for you next week and it worked for the rest, I don't mind.
Yeah, I don't want people not to go because, okay, Mr. Bowdery, are we still meeting on Monday? I'm just trying to...
Okay.
Okay.
We'll look at it deeper with Mr. Lee, our availability dates, and then we'll learn more on Thursday.
Okay.
Next item.
All right, number ten is the charter application update for information only. Rutherford County Schools Charter Review Committee has compiled initial reviews of submitted applications from American Classical Academy, Rutherford, and Springs, and Springs Public Schools, Tennessee, Empower Academy. Capacity interviews have been scheduled with both applicants and will be conducted prior to April 14th. An opportunity for public review and comment will be available on the Rutherford County Schools website, and will be open on the evening of April 7th and closed on April 14th. The Charter Review Committee is planning to present recommendations and details, summary of findings of the Rutherford County School Board on April 21st.
Thank you. Questions, comments? All right, next item?
All right, number eleven is a Title I contract for Laverne Middle School. Tara Brown, the connection coach, will provide one day of teacher professional development on topics of the teen brain, the power of connections, intentional interactions with students, and social and emotional stability. By attending this professional development, teachers will learn how to create positive connections with students, provide social and emotional support, and how to prime the teen brain for learning, increase motivation, and increase student engagement. Teachers will learn and implement strategies that will address social and emotional needs of the child with the goal of increasing student achievement. The contract details as follows: onsite training on May the 19th of 2022, onsite training for eighty-five educators, due to sessions. Session one will be eight to eleven a.m., session two will be twelve to three p.m. Total contract fees, this is all-inclusive, eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Thank you. Questions? Was that Laverne Middle, you said Laverne Middle?
Laverne Middle School.
Members of the board, any additional questions, comments? If none, we move on to the next item.
All right, number twelve, I guess this would be if the vote goes the way it should go, right? Is that correct? Human resource job description found on tab four, under directions and supervision of assistant superintendent in human resources and student services, the human, the human resources benefit specialist and, and human resource benefits generalist positions will perform a variety of tasks associated with coordination and administration of employee benefits. Board approval is requested upon consideration and approval to move the county self-funded insurance health plan to the group health plans offered by the state of Tennessee for medical coverage as presented. This position will be funded through this fiscal year on S R three funds, and then put in, and both positions will be rolled into the general purpose school fund in 2022, 2023. Is that correct?
There'll be a total of four positions, or this, the one job description will be, of course, for the benefit specialist, that will be the lead. That will be the individual once approved by the board, this description, and if the board votes on this MOU in affirmative on Thursday, then that will be funded for two months out of S R three funds. I already have it in the budget, request for the GPS fund for next fiscal year. The other job description is for three leads, I'm sorry, three generalists that would report to this specialist, and they would be the, what's called, the state calls a agency benefit coordinator for the state plans for onboarding and assisting our employees with insurance.
And looking at this, Doug, what we would save going to the state plan would primarily pay for these positions.
It would easily pay for that.
Easily pay for it, and some.
What's the salary range, are we looking here?
The, I know the generalist will be a level five on our hourly, and how we came up with, how we arrived at these pay ranges was we requested the job descriptions and the salary ranges for these exact same descriptions with county risk management. So, they're, what these people will be doing are very similar to what's happening right now in county risk management under their department, and the separate individual... I want to say it was around seventy thousand, but let me...
For the specialist?
The specialist?
That was their coordinator, that was, no, the generalist is a skill level five hourly employee on our print scale. Range of seventy to seventy-three.
For the specialist?
That's for the specialist, which is there, would be the, the main coordinator for all of this. And once again, that's in line with what the county risk management has on their salary schedule.
And then what about the other positions?
It's a level five on the hourly, and I'll tell you what that is. Level five begins with currently this fiscal year, it's eighteen dollars and seventy-two cents starting, and that can go up to ten. We get, we provide ten years, up to ten years of experience, that's twenty-one dollars and fifty-three cents an hour. Like I said, those three are hourly's.
I'm, I'm confused, help me. How many positions are we talking about?
Four.
Four altogether?
Yes, ma'am, and how we arrived at that was the work with the state through this last year, a agency our size would have that many individuals to act as agency benefit coordinator for this many employees. The vision would be, like, right now, we're under county risk management, they have people assigned to us, and if one of our employees would like to see those people face-to-face, they drive up to Maple Street and meet at their office. This has been discussion, Dr. Anthony and I, this discussion was, eventually, once these people are trained, we would actually assign these, these four certain schools. So, for example, if you were in Laverne, you would have, in Laverne schools and parts of Smyrna, you would have one of those four as your first contact, and those people could actually be in that area, instead of a person from Laverne Lake having to drive all the way to Murfreesboro. As of now, you would have somebody down in that area that you could go see, and that would be similar for the, all areas of the county.
So there's one specialist and four generalists?
There's one specialist and three generalists.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Bowdery, currently, we are, we are with the county risk management. So do we compensate, or do we pay the county to manage these components for us currently?
That's correct. That's blended all within the premiums. When we saw over seven million dollars in savings, that's part of the savings that we would then, going to the state, we would have to, of course, you know, have that same, have that same service for our employees by having those positions, and also their software that we have in the budget that currently risk management is using for, like, ACA reporting, for issuing of ten ninety-fives at the end of the year, things like that. We've already, that's in the budget for next year. That's taken care of.
So how many of these positions, and can you even identify how many of these positions are we already currently funding through paying county risk management?
Everything that, everything that, we're funding all the support right now for, like, for example, when we go to the state, they have an actuary do an actuary evaluation of OPEB for the installed state plan. Right now, Rutherford County, because we're off that, we have our own, we actually pay that as well, and that, of course, goes through the premiums, you know, that we pay. So there's a lot that goes into the premium that we pay right now to, over to risk management. For example, the walk-in clinics, it's one point five million that gets rolled into that premium that our employee sees. So those things are, once again, just, just rolled in.
So we won't have the clinics?
Not, not in the way it is now.
Right.
We had a discussion with the committee, and we, and is, is, you know, one point five million for the clinics as it is now, under the state, they have the option to go to about, I think it was fourteen.
Fourteen, mhm.
And, of course, there'll be a co-pay, just like, you know, under the state plan. They also have the opportunity to do telehealth visits, and that's even less expensive than to walk-in visit on, on a, on a co-pay plan, or they call it PPO plan. And even under our, we have that currently under the clinics right now, and that's picking up more people utilizing that service. So that'll be available at low cost under state plan.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, members of the board? There are none, on to the next item, number ten.
All right, number thirteen, legal, found on tab five. This is disciplinary hearing appeal. The board has been requested to review the disciplinary hearing authority to uphold remandment of a student at Blackman High School. Based on the view of the DHA's record, you can do the following: A, affirm the decision of the DHA; B, overturn the decision; or C, grant a hearing before the board.
Thank you, members of the board. You have a packet in front of you. If you have any questions, you can contact Ms. Ridley. Next item.
All right, fourteen, financial matters, found on tab six. This is capital project fund budget amendment for Smyrna High School football turf project. This amendment in Fund 177 recognizes a generous donation of fifty thousand from Warner Athletics Construction towards the high school football turf at Smyrna High School. Donated funds will be deposited in Education Capital Project Fund, with the turf project budgeted expenditures to be increased accordingly.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, members of the board? Okay, next item.
Fund, Fund 189, building program fund project budget request. This building program project budget amendment requests funds as presented in the detailed amendment to be moved from future secondary and elementary land, future new secondary projects, Laverne Middle School addition, Plainview Elementary School, to budget for the design of five high school additions. Funding for these designs are a total of five million seven hundred thousand to come from the remaining unshared portion of the funds of Laverne Middle, future secondary projects, and a portion of the unshared secondary land, with the remaining funding come from an internal fund, 189 cash, until a future bond issue that will occur later this summer, after the design work is completed and the hard construction estimates are recognized. This amendment also transfers all but two hundred thousand of unencumbered funds from Plainview Elementary Project and the Laverne Middle Addition Project, with the shared funds of these projects moved to future elementary school projects.
Thank you. That was a lot of information. Any questions, members of the board? Okay, next item.
All right, next item is the review of the budgets of 143 and Fund 147, excuse me, for information only.
Ready?
Ready.
And we start. What you have in front of you, if you want to, we'll go ahead and go through the cafeteria fund first, and then we'll move over to Fund 177, the educational capital project. If you look, I've got just some highlights of this fund, and once again, this is a draft that I put together. The board is free to, you know, this is your budget, you know, you are free to, you know, change anything that you believe that needs to be changed. Of course, I just use this for starting point. The highlights of this fund, currently, we have forty-nine schools that serve, with four of these, those schools being a satellite feeding site, another school with a full kitchen, the one school, of course, is the virtual school, does not have a cafeteria, starting with Dr. Solon, if, you know, if a child at the virtual school wanted lunch, we would make sure that was provided, but we've not had that request yet. So we have the forty-nine schools being served. So we have the forty-nine schools being served. If you recall, back in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, we centralized school cafeteria personnel management to align more closely with the personal management of other middle Tennessee school systems, and this has proven to be very successful with keeping our costs down because number one, cost for any, of course, any food service is labor. By containing costs with staffing and aligning it with, you know, actual labor and production, we were able to have funds available to do what we did, this board did recently, which was do a step increase because once again, as you're, we're going to talk about here, the funding for this cafeteria operation is in a separate fund from the general purpose school fund with the tax funds. This is purely run with, you know, as we'll, as we'll see, by, by charges and also USDA reimbursement for meals served. This proposed budget funds a four percent pay increase for all full and part-time cafeteria employees for next fiscal year. Once again, I just put that there as a start point. Looking at the governor's budget, you know, they have not voted, I guess they have not voted on the budget yet, but, you know, the discussion was the allocation would be a four percent pay increase for teachers. I know this board in the past has, has desired to, if, what the teachers get, if there's any way possible, to do that with the support employees as well. Once again, this is your budget, I'm using this as a start point, okay? The seamless summer option, and this is something we will discuss about as we go through the lines, seamless summer option, that is the USDA program that says every child will eat with, for no charge, and the USDA will fund this. That is set to end at the end of this school year according to current guidance from the USDA. Unless this program is extended by the federal government to next school year, then beginning in the fall, we will return to traditional meal reimbursement in this, this coming fall semester. And once again, that will demonstrate some challenges being that we've, and we'll see that as we go through these lines, a meal, the cost of a meal has gone up dramatically over the last few years. We have not had, because once again, every child is eating at no cost. Once the USDA, this seamless summer option ends, we would of course then do a, a meal charge study to see what we would need to have as a current updated meal charge for a lunch and a breakfast, and that would go before this board to vote. Once again, that charge would have to cover the cost, including labor, and that would then, that would then of course fund the program when we go back to the normal USDA meal reimbursement. It's an overview. If you turn the page, you'll see something different than you have in years past. This is what you have in front of you for the next two pages. This is actually the new budget software. It's new for us, it's been used by, you know, a lot of other counties for years and including our county at the other funds, but we're, we'll have going forward, you'll see your budgets in what this is called next-gen budget software, and it's, once again, it's utilized not only by numerous other counties around us, I'm familiar with this from last employer, but also the county courthouse actually uses this for all the other funds of the county. So this is going to be, it'll give you some, some more information from this as well as it being standardized with the county.
Mr. Ruttery, on to Object Code Three Ninety-Nine and Object Code Seven Thirty-Two, I think you've run over there, is that eighty-four thousand and seventeen dollars for building purchases at Sturgis Creek Elementary and looks like a hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars for other contracted services at Oakland High School?
Are you looking at, what page?
Your page for the budget report on the fund summarized expenses.
In the cafeteria?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, it's, it's capital projects, I just thought that was, now it makes more sense.
I won't go restart my heart.
Just making sure you didn't miss that.
I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions here to me.
Just keep you on your toes.
Yes sir, thank you.
I forgot, what, before we went with the seamless and everyone could, and everyone could be fed, how much were we charging?
Get to that. That's a great question, yes ma'am, I'll get to that.
I don't remember.
That's, that's, yes, I've got that. We'll start right there with the lunch payments, as you see, we're going to look at the revenues, and just to walk you through this, because you'll see this in all of our funds as we go through the budget. That first column, you have actual twenty twenty-one, those are audited numbers for last fiscal year. Then you have your original budget, that's the, that's the budget for, that we originally voted in, you know, about this time last year. Then your amended budget. There, one thing is, you, the board just voted on a budget amendment for this fund at the end of March. That has not gone through, that'll go through the county commission here the next, next time, and that will be posted on to this fund, but it's not gone through the full commission yet. That's why that amendment that you voted on this last time won't, is not there yet in the record. Then of course, you have estimated and budget current year, what's actually happening in that fund to date. You have department request, and that's where, that is the initial department request coming from the cafeteria department, and I worked with Eric Smith, our cafeteria manager or director, to prepare this. The second column, it says mayor slash board recommendation. Of course, the board recommendation would be the, the board's approval, the BOE's approval, and that's just a, when it says mayor, that's just because that's, the, the software's created for that side and our side, so that's all departments. The highway department would have the same thing. And then forwarding on, it will show budget commission recommendation. Of course, that's when, when health and ed and the budget committee approves that column, of course, we would just roll that forward to what the commit, budget committee would approve, and then on to the full commission. So as you can see, budget commission, it's got zero in there now, it's sitting with, with the board right now under board recommendation. Let's go ahead and go down these lines, unless somebody's got a question on the format. Starting, going down to lunch payments, we're going to be budgeting, as you can see under the department request and board recommendation, you have six point four million. This is up substantially from what is coming in right now, simply because once again, people are eating, the, the children are eating at no cost to them as the federal government is picking up that cost. The, to Ms. Maxwell's question, right now for grades six through twelve, it's been a while since someone had to pay for this, but six through twelve, a, a meal for lunch is three dollars. For K through five, the meal is two dollars and seventy-five cents. And we'll go ahead and get the other charges. A lunch payment for an adult is three dollars and eighty cents. Breakfast payment for a child, for all children regardless of grade, for breakfast is a dollar fifty, and lunch payments for adults is two dollars. And those would be the meal charges that, once again, would be studied and would be placed before this board for increase based on current costs, you know, for next fiscal year. And then would, like I said, would, would reflect the cost needed to support the operations.
Did you say that breakfast for adults is two, two dollars?
Yes ma'am, breakfast is two dollars for adults.
Thank you.
And they are paying that. That is, the, 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 the adults pay for their meal, it's the children that the USDA would pick up in our cafeteria.
How much do you think it's going to go up?
What's, the price?
Mhm.
Well, substantially, we'll get into that. Well, I'll say it's a, one, one item is food, just the cost of raw food on the second, it's seventy-three one hundred four two two. We started out with an original budget of seven point, seven million seven hundred thousand for this current fiscal year. We just did a budget amendment plus a budget amendment to bring that up, plus about tacking on the, or adding another three hundred thousand, so the original budget request for food for next fiscal year, it will go from seven million seven hundred thousand to eleven million dollars.
Ooh, ooh.
That's raw food. Prices have gone up, and they continue to go up. We, as we discussed, we've tried to keep the board aware that we've, we've seen sometimes weekly increases in food prices.
How's the meal per labor hours?
What's that, sir?
Meal per labor hours.
The meals per labor hours on?
How far have they gone up this year?
They've increased substantially. We have seen, we're, we're typically serving over forty thousand meals a day in our cafeterias. So I mean, we, we, our, our operation is, is huge for food service. And so you can imagine the amount of not only food, but the food service items. As you can see, we're also increasing for food prep supplies, not, bring this up very quickly. We had an increase of, and food preparation supplies, we added two hundred thousand just for that, and that's just, you know, just, you know, just the, the materials, not, not the bowls and everything, but just the disposable goods for food preparation supplies. That increased with a budget amendment to two hundred thousand, and that's at one point three million amended. Once that amendment goes through, the county commission that this board approved at the end of last month, and we have four twenty-one. Yes, and that will be our original department request for next year, one point three million just for food preparation supplies. Let me, let me keep going through these lines, these are great questions and that you're having, and like I said, this, you can see, this will probably be a marked increase after going, it'll be coming up on three years without an increase in a meal price. Go through, as, as you can see, the lunch payments, the adults, budgeting two hundred and ten thousand, income for breakfast up six hundred thousand, and all-a-cart sales half a million. Just as investment income down, as we're seeing, you know, interest rates are down obviously, as investments down. Think. The forty-six five twenty, hundred and eighty thousand, that's state matching funds to offset storage costs of commodities, which is, we get a few cents per meal served for that, that revenue line item, forty-six five twenty. The USDA lunch reimbursement, that's back end budgeted at twelve million dollars, and that it's based on a sliding scale that if a student is full pay or free reduced, and that gets updated in July, what those rates are per meal. USDA commodities, that's the value of the food that we receive from the USDA, that's basically an in-and-out of cost and revenue. USDA reimbursement breakfast, line item forty-seven one one three, budgeted at three million. Once again, just like the, it's, it's the same as the USDA reimbursement for lunch. As you can see, that's going to become the meat of, no pun intended, of the cafeteria fund. As you can see, forty-seven one one four, the USDA reimbursement other, that was, that was the seamless summer that we're discussing, that would sunset, and currently we have a budget of that of, once your amendment goes through, that you approved last month, it will be twenty-three million eight forty-eight and eighty-six dollars. That's the, that will be the amended budget for this current fiscal year. With the sunset of that, we'll have a miscellaneous grant of a quarter million in that line item, that's a delivery fee reimbursement for brown box delivery, that's more back to the traditional USDA reimbursement. So you'll see a reduction in that line item of twenty-three million five hundred ninety-eight thousand eighty-six dollars. Does anybody got any question on revenue before we move down to expenditures? Okay. Moving down on the expenditure side, we have supervisor director, once again, the only change in there is the four percent increase. That has, that's our supervisor and assistant director, that's in that line item. Below that, we have two bookkeepers. And then into the majority of our cafeteria personnel in seventy-three one hundred one sixty-five, we have budgeted eight million nine hundred forty-three thousand and forty dollars, and that makes up budgeted positions for four hundred and eleven cafeteria employees, that includes the salary cafeteria managers, and a hundred and eighteen full-time cafeteria personnel, and two hundred and ninety-three part-time personnel. This, the number is down from four hundred and sixty-seven total positions before this board voted to go to centralize the labor, stat, the staffing of labor to be more in line with other school systems. Below that's the seventy-three one hundred one eighty-nine, that's six positions, field force, four field supervisors, one free reduced processing clerk, and one inventory ordering clerk within that line. Below that, you see the related benefits and payroll-related items. If, if you notice, draw your attention to the medical insurance, we are leaving it at the current budget of one million two hundred thousand, and the reason being behind, behind that is, yes, the, these employees will be transitioning to the state plan as well, the full-time employees that are eligible for insurance, just like our general purpose school fund employees, with the study from Mercer and the adding of spouses and the different, and the different plan options that, once again, would be better benefits for employees, better plans, but would increase a cost to the county. I would like to leave those medical line items alone for this year until we have one year of experience with open enrollment to see, you know, it's like we've discussed, this is, you know, even if we break even with the cost, if our employees wind up with better insurance, I think, I think we all agree that we won in the end with this.
Absolutely.
And so I'd like to hold that line item alone until we see one year of experience on these different plans, and with that in mind.
I think that makes great sense, Mr. Ruttery. Don't, don't take away from it right now, we may can later, but not right now.
Okay. Yes, and I, I agree that, you know, this time next year, we'll see the full cost savings of this, what we've done here. Besides that, just like I said, I just increase, the only, the only changes there is just a modest increase in social security, state retirement, and employee Medicare for those, the pay raise, the four percent plan raise. Down below that, you see the non-payroll lines, the, I can answer any questions on this, but I'll just touch on the major variances, which is in seventy-three one hundred three nine nine, other contracted services, I've reduced that by quarter million. This board in its last amendment to this fund, you approved the purchase of six hundred thousand in equipment, and once again, that was to replace some outdated and fully depreciated equipment like stoves and food service items that otherwise would have been having to be paid for in maintenance. So speaking with Mr. Smith, he believes that we'd be able to reduce that line item now that we're getting equipment that has warranties on it instead of trying to nurse the older stuff along. And I think that's, that, that in a nutshell is it. Just one other thing to touch on, because I know it's, I guess the question would be, what happens when we get to the fall and we see a, if, what happens if we see a marked decrease in meal participation with the rates going up, you know, on the meal charges? It'll be just like in a restaurant, you know, when a restaurant, when a restaurant sees less participation, you know, less customers, they adjust their staff accordingly. Now that we're in a situation that we have a good fund balance for this fund? Now that we're in a situation that we have a good fund balance for this fund, um, we would, and the, with the changes that Mr. Burlock recommended this board approved, um, of centralizing labor under the Food, uh, Service Director, he could quickly adjust staffing as far as hiring freezes, not, you know, we would not want layoffs, we would just do hiring freezes, say we will adjust accordingly and utilize that fund balance and the hiring freeze to bring in, you know, once again, in line with what production needs for employees.
Going forward on that, under the new TISA, uh, funding formula, you know how we were having difficulty of our high schoolers filling out the free and reduced forms?
Mm-hmm.
If they are in an area of concentrated poverty, that will cover everyone in that school, and they will not have to fill out that form.
Okay.
You'll get reimbursed.
Is something on the horizon in twenty-three, twenty-four? One other item touching on, one thing that this board hasn't seen since the pandemic hit was, um, if you recall, we were having some pretty sizable bad debt write-offs. I mean, and, I mean, it was, that, that year before this stopped, it was approaching three hundred thousand dollars that would hit the general purpose school fund. You can imagine, if we went back to the way it was, where it would be under this scenario that we're talking about. So I requested Eric Smith, um, to look at some of the, um, bad debt policies and collection policies of other school systems in Middle Tennessee, um, and we'll have something before this board later in, like, in the summertime, um, basically to make sure, one, you know, always and foremost, that, you know, this, this is going to be something dealing with a parent, not with a child. Child's going to get, going to get fed regardless. Um, but of course, something to work with the parent to make sure if they qualify for free and reduced, to get them on that. If not, just let them know, hey, your child is, is starting to rack up some meal debt, and we'll work with you to address that. That will be before this board later in the summer. And a lot of what you'll see is not only in that, uh, proposed policy will be not only best practices from other surrounding counties, but also what came out of that meal, uh, study, the bad debt study from, uh, two years ago that the board, uh, put in. And that's the cafeteria fund. Has anybody got any questions?
I have a question on that. Four fifty-one uniforms, minor, minor cost, I understand, but is this new for us to provide uniforms? I see a zero for actual in twenty-twenty-one. Have we made a change there?
Four fifty-one.
Yes. So, we might have not purchased any at that time, or we might have got it from another, somewhere else, but I, I'd, I would say more likely, we just didn't purchase it instead of those uniforms. He might have had an inventory, but I'll find out for you, but, but that is a common, it's a routine thing. That's cafeteria worker uniforms, that's in that line, and I'll find out.
I was just curious, is that a laundry service? Is that the purchasing and distribution of?
It's a, it's the purchasing of, currently, we use the uniform house, you know, that's got that bid, but, um, that's for cafeteria worker, purchase of uniforms.
Okay. Thank you.
And I will find out the answer to that question.
All right, next is the one-seventy-seven.
Go through the revenue and expenditures on that, and then turn it over to Mr. Lee to talk about the, what makes up the, uh, request for capital projects. You have here, uh, the summary of the Fund one-seventy-seven. Main revenue source for the, uh, for this capital projects fund is five point five cents on the county property tax levy, and we're budgeting two million, four hundred fifty thousand in county adequate facilities taxes. The adequate facilities tax is generated from new residential construction permits and is earmarked by state law for education debt service and capital projects. If you recall, last, um, last, uh, summer, before the end of the fiscal year, the county commission voted to suspend their private act, which authorized the old development tax, and they adopted, um, a new develop, well, it was new to them, it was, uh, passed in two thousand and five. It was the County Powers Relief Act that authorized a general law development tax, um, on new residential growth, um, and construction, and under that general law, it required the county to utilize the proceeds for education debt service or education capital projects. Under the old county private act, they utilized some of the development tax, and like the county general fund, under the new one, they couldn't do that. So the discussion was, we will, uh, we will place three, a budgeted three million dollars, which was the first estimate of that tax under the new, under the new law, um, in this capital project fund, we will move two and a half, or I'm sorry, two cents, two cents of property tax from this capital projects to the county general fund, to basically trade. Being that the two cents on the tax levy unshared, brought right out a million dollars, they budgeted three million dollars as an original estimate, as you can see, with about a year under our belts, that's projected to actually bring in two point four million. So we're not going to get the three million dollars. We, we gave them two million dollars plus whatever growth, we received the two point four with whatever growth we received. So conservative estimate for next fiscal year, two point four million for what that development tax is going to bring in that fund. As, as it said, in, the, the property tax in this capital project fund, unlike the general purpose school fund, which has to be shared with the city of Murfreesboro, based on the weighted, uh, full-time equivalent of the ADA, we do not have to share the property tax for capital projects with the city, and that stems from a twenty-fourteen, uh, State Court of Appeals case, um, that was, uh, City of Athens sued McMinn County, saying you should have shared, they had a capital project fund like ours, and they said, you, you should have shared, uh, a percentage of that fund based on, um, attendance with us. The court ruled, no, the sharing is for operations, not for capital projects. So, um, we're able to receive about fifteen percent more revenue with this unshared penny based on the current enrollment of, uh, Murfreesboro City Schools. The first budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three year is on what a penny of the county property tax levy will bring. As I, I put that zero because we are in a reappraisal year, and we have yet got that, yet to get that information, what a penny's going to bring, um, after reappraisal. So what you have in those revenue line items for property tax is the original budget number for property tax for this year. So I do not have that information, we'll adjust accordingly. This year's requested capital projects have an estimated total cost of seven million, nine hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars, and Mr. Lee will be going through that in a moment. If you turn the page, you can see the detailed revenues, which, once again, I do not have updated county property tax yet. Hopefully, sometime beginning of next, um, I'm sorry, sometime this month in April, it's April, so, month's getting away from me. Hopefully, next week or two, we might have some updated property tax numbers. The, um, the business tax and the, um, school facility, and the, uh, school facility development tax, that, that'll probably hold firm right there, might, might have a small increase, but I think that's conservative numbers to start with. That's, of course, what the, under, under state law, um, the county commission will be the final say in what revenue items, line item budgets can be. So as always, I coordinate with Lisa Nolan, the finance office, to make sure that whatever revenues that we put in there, that they're, they're going to agree with, that we're not going to have an inflated number, you know, that, that, you know, obviously, it doesn't benefit anybody. And below on the expenditure side, you see the property, the trustees commission, budgeted three hundred and eighteen thousand, four thirty-seven. Once again, that's just the commission that the trust, county trustee takes off any property taxes that they handle, that state law that requires that. And we arrive at our last expenditure line item, which is three-three-five, maintenance repair service of buildings, seven million, nine hundred and nine, eight hundred and ten, eight hundred and ten dollars, and that is, Mr., I'll turn this over to Mr. Lee, who can explain and walk you through the detailed projects, unless anyone has any question on revenues or the trustee commission.
I've got to have a question. I don't see it happening, but if it does happen, if we have a shortfall on the school facilities development tax, do we get our two pennies back at that point to make up the difference, or how does that work?
That's, that's a great question to ask, because when they, when they moved over the development tax, um, once again, it was originally estimated at three million, and they brought, they took, at the time, a penny was worth a million. But, but your question, of course, is if it doesn't even get to the point what we lost. Yeah, because the discussion would be, that would be a good discussion with the commission, because if you recall, when that tax was increased, it was, that property tax was earmarked for education capital projects when it was originally. Now, commission can move pennies on levy legally, but, you know, there's legal, and then there's, this is what was presented, you know, when the taxes were raised originally for that.
There's just one account here we do not need to have a shortfall in. We need everything we can get, so, we definitely don't want to ever go backwards on this.
I agree.
We'll make sure we had something covered there.
Any other questions before we turn over to Mr. Lee? Okay.
All right, so you have before you nod, three-page green highlight. This is the same format that you've been looking at, those of you that have been on the board for the last three years. Uh, we started out in year one at twenty-five billion, last year, we're a little over a hundred million, and this year, we're approaching two hundred million in deferred capital maintenance and projects. So we're basically, um, what you see, uh, we have done here tonight, highlighted in green, we have looked at two hundred million dollars' worth of work that needs to be done throughout the county, and we've pared it down to seven million, nine oh nine, eight ten, because that's what we get. What, the, the biggest increase from last year to this year, just so that, if you go back and look at what we had last year, our HVAC projects last year totaled thirty-six, nine forty-five, this year, it's a hundred and twenty-five, nine thirty-one. That's our biggest increase. Basically, what that is from is added projects that have moved over from year three or year two, they're now in year one, and material cost increases. We bid two year, two schools this year that were bid through S R two funds. Uh, we had, um, a million, five budgeted for both of those projects, and they both came in at four million. That's our today's cost. So what you see here is updated cost analysis to all of our projects and the new projects that have come on board. The other major increase is in major roofing. Uh, last year, we were in the same boat, we had seventeen million, five in roofing, and this year, we're a little over twenty-six, two. There again, projects moved over, new schools added, uh, and, um, short amount of work. We are proposing to do some roofing this year, a little over two and a half million, but when you see seven million, and I've got one HVAC project that, that's a four million dollar hit, doesn't leave much money to spread around. So each year, I feel like we're Solomon, having to split the baby and decide where we go. Um, it's not a position I like to be in, but i- it is the position that I am in. So I highlight the green, I bring it over to the side. There are a couple of projects that you'll see highlighted. Basically, when Doug and I started this process, we were banking on the three million, so my target number was eight million, five fifty-two. Doug emailed me Sunday and said, hold on, brother, go back and readjust. Uh, you're only going to get two point four, so now my number was seven million, nine oh nine, eight ten. So those are the projects that made the cut, that didn't make the cut, that when I had to go back and cut it again, those are the projects that we pulled out. If this number changes up or down, those will be the first ones that get put back in, and if it goes down, I'll have to decide what comes off next. So that's kind of the one-seventy-seven fund. I know there's some folks that are new to looking at this. If you have questions during the next day or two, call and talk to me about it. Most, all of these have been on here. They, their priority has moved from year five to year four, from year four to year three, from year three to year two, year two to year one. And then the ones that are beyond year five, or were beyond year five, that were off the sheet, that were year six or seven, they're now on, they become year four and year five. So I have projects beyond five years, but it gets a little bit cumbersome, and each year, we go back and reevaluate. I go back and look at each one of these projects, and we may have showed one that was three years out, and you go, well, this was three years out last year, and now you've got it in year one. It's changed. Uh, we've reevaluated it, and it's worse now than it was. A lot of our big problem with our HVAC is we can no longer get parts. We have equipment that's approaching twenty-plus years old. Um, a lot of that equipment's R twenty-two freon, R twenty-two is gone. It's kind of like, how many farmers we got, but if you hadn't priced fertilizer or round, I, I like to die Friday. I priced Roundup, and it went from eighty dollars to, for two and a half gallons, to almost three hundred dollars for two and a half gallons. R twenty-two's worse than that. We used to buy it for like twenty dollars a pound, and that stuff's like gold now, it's six, seven hundred dollars a pound, if you can find it, and we were fortunate to find some in the two hundred dollar range, and we bought all we could get our hands on. A lot of our equipment is R twenty-two. The new is R fourteen. Well, the R fourteen runs at a higher pressure, the equipment that ran on R twenty-two, those components can't take that new pressure, so we can't just chuck R twenty-two. It's not like gasoline, where I can go from leaded to unleaded, and I get a few knocks, and, and I just don't get my gas mileage anymore, it just doesn't work, it'll blow the equipment apart. So there's things like that, that we are rapidly approaching. But as you can see, we're getting further and further behind each year.
So this, this budget, we're talking about school facilities and development, that's what's driving this, right?
Yes, sir. That would be all major expenditures that we would have to, look at, uh, find examples, playgrounds. I don't know, uh, those of you in the Walter Hill area. When it gets to the point that our elementary playgrounds are, we can no longer get parts, we've disassembled as many pieces as we can, and they be, basically become inoperable because they don't have enough swings or, you know, whatever they're, we replace them. It's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace a playground now. And I've got six on this list, and if you'll look, I'm sorry, I had to weigh it, I talked to my guys again today before I sent this out this morning, we pulled last castings off the list, so I have to wait till next year. They're deserving this year, it's three hundred thousand dollars, but when I went from eight-five to seven-nine, I had to look, you know, what, I have to weigh it all, so it becomes very, very painful for me.
Can, can I ask, under restrooms restoration?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, it's like, four of them, and how many, can you do more than one restroom for sixty thousand dollars?
Uh, you can do two, you can do two, because we're having to change. This is, this is a thing that we started two years ago, and the only reason I'm staying there is because we're close to getting them finished. I would like to see this one through to get it finished. But it's basically, it depends on the size of the gang restroom, uh, whether it's two stalls or four, how bad a condition they're in, uh, do I have to, some of them have block walls, if that's the case, we can epoxy those walls, and I just buy new doors, but if they're toilet partitions, we have to change all the toilet partitions. So they vary, they average somewhere between twenty-five and forty thousand dollars each, depending upon the size of them. Most of them, the fixtures are outdated, so when we go in there to replace them and take the commodes up so that we can epoxy the floor, you just, you just go get a, add in- the floor, you just, you just go get a, add insult to injury, we go buy new commodes and new fixtures. So they're, they are quite extensive, and that's the reason I've left them in there. I would like to continue to try and get those finished and get those behind us.
Mr. Lee, on your, your five-year LED lighting, I know somebody looked at that and say, well, that's about eighteen, nineteen percent of your total budget, but there's more to that. You might want to expand on that.
Yeah, the, the LED lighting's been on there for the last few years. We've looked at a lot of things. That LED lighting will generate quite a bit of savings that could potentially go toward some of these projects. Once the LED lighting is completed, and that's basically all of our facilities, inside and outside, including sports lighting, is somewhere between sixteen and eighteen million. I've got sixteen, five. Our consultant's still fair, fairly comfortable there. Don't know that I am, but it's close. When all that's said and done, we can generate somewhere between three and four million dollars savings on our electric bill by converting every one of our lights. But it's going to take sixteen and a half million dollars to do it. We've looked at two or three things. Doug's looking at another possibility now. But if we could do that and generate that, I've got it down there, over three years, it can be done that way, it can be done in a year. I talked to three consultants in the last month that say, if y'all can come up with the money, we, we can do all of your facilities in one year now. I'm, I'm going to have to.
Payback's really four years then.
Yes, sir.
After that, it's money.
Yes, sir. That's correct. That's correct. That could go, potentially go to helping, helping ease this problem. But we're going to go from seven to ten. And don't get me wrong, I'd jump up and down. If we could come up with three or four more million, we'd, we'd do it, we'd do those big HCA, HVAC projects is what we'd start. The problem that's staring us in the face that's not going away is in the next couple of years, we're going to start having catastrophic failures at schools with HVAC systems, and it's not going to be a Blackman Highway. I came here and said, okay, we're going to rent a chiller for a couple hundred thousand dollars, while, and we're going to keep half the school up. It's going to go down, we're not going to have any heat in there, and it's going to be six months. And I'm always asked, which, which school is it? Lo, it's that, I wish I had that crystal ball. I've got a good suspicion on which are my top contenders, but I don't know where they And down at the bottom, since we're there, looking at the LED, there's what's called the principal request, is one point four eight seven million. There's a list that the principal send Doug and myself each year. We send this out and say, what are your needs? Well, y'all know as well as we do, they got more needs than, but one point four eight seven is all the, I don't want to call them small, it's a combination of ten thousand dollars at this school, it's twenty thousand dollars at this one, but it's all principal-generated. They tell us what they need. It's water bottle filling stations, it's, can I get this bathroom? Can I get my carpet in my library? It's thirty years old, can we get my carpet replaced? That's what comes up with this one point five million, is, is what that number is. And then the rest, we're gradually trying to get our schools under our promise system. We've got a little over six million, right at it, to, to finish the conversion, getting us into promise, which promises a one-key system for each school. We have schools that, I don't know, Mr. Spurlock, how many master keys did you carry around at Oakland?
Ooh, hold on.
And some of our SROs have got some pretty good-sized keys at their school, too, is where, over the years, if something was added or changed, they just rekeyed a section, and it didn't match what they had to start with. It was, people didn't know what key systems were, and they just did what was ever cheapest. So we have schools that have five or six master keys, and you've got to know which section of the building that master key works. We're trying to get them down to one key for the whole building, and it, it takes time. So that's mostly what we're after. Good questions? Go ahead, Mr. Young.
I had something brought to my attention here, that I didn't realize it was an issue in today's society. Definitely was an issue back in my days, but now I'm understanding from an administrator that these young boys, when they go to the restroom, they don't use a urinal. Especially, I guess, with cell phones and things like that, they lined up to use a partition toilet. So that's something we may need to be taking in consideration when we design these new restrooms and things like that.
Okay. That's the first I've heard of that. That administrator hadn't.
First I ever heard of it.
It'd be great to know. I mean, you know, if they, we typically, when we do new construction, we'll go back a year after it's over and go, okay, what worked, what didn't work? But that's new. I'll be glad to look into that.
I, I didn't know we had that issue either, but they, they are not using the urinals they're lining up to. He went down there because he had the class, or, you know, the kids wouldn't get the class on time, and that's what the problem was, is lined up to use the restroom.
I'll definitely look into that.
Another thing, on RFPs, I get this question sometimes, as far as our funding body, there's questions sometimes about us changing specs.
Mm-hmm.
Can you give us an example of any time you would change a spec, or what's the process there?
Okay. Let me use roofing as an example, and I'll just give you that one, because it seems to be the most prevalent, for the, in the past, we have used EPDM, predominant on everything we've done as far as renovations go. So with EPDM, our specification is written around Carlisle. That's the company that's the basis for quality. It's this level of quality. Carlisle has a number mil thicknesses of EPDM, and we're at sixty mils, twenty-year warranty. If I wanted to reduce my price, I could go to a fifty mil, or if I wanted to make it better, I can do a sixty mil with fleeceback. There's all, that's, but whatever that specification is, if you have another manufacturer, Firestone, Mulehide, there's some others out there, as long as they can meet that spec, that sixty mil, twenty-year warranty, their product is acceptable. They can bid. Has to be an equal, too. If I changed a spec, I would go from one product to another, or we would change, like I just said, we would go from a sixty mil to a thirty mil. We haven't done that when it comes to roofing. Now, recently, we did bid out some roofs that were fluid-applied roofing. We've never bid fluid-applied roofing before. It was bid around a comparable, because all of our EPDM had always been twenty years, we bid a fluid-applied at twenty years. There again, they've got different products, fluid-applied just like EPDM does, different levels of thickness get you a, better quality, more warranty, all those kind of things. So we bid some fluid-applied roofs. And the reason we bid them is because I didn't have a good market base for what those roofs cost a square foot. Unfortunately, there's no funding this year for roofing, so we're not doing any of it. It helped me do our budget for this coming year, so we'll be doing some bidding. As far as changing spec, very rarely do I change spec. It's not something we do very often. Now, there's some things that have changed, Mr. Boudry's process that we've come into, where maybe we weren't being as stringent as we should be on requiring bonds from our contractors and things like that, that we now are more stringent upon. We hadn't changed the spec, the product's the same, warranty's the same. The only thing that's different is that if it's over a certain dollar amount, the contractor now has to provide a performance bond.
That's.
But maybe that's what people are looking at, is changing the spec, but as far as, i- if you are a company that's never worked for Rutherford County before, and you wanted to bid a roof, or you wanted to bid mowing our grass, or you wanted to bid the electrical for installing a, hooking up a portable, you got a state license, you got a business license, and you can, and if the work is under a hundred thousand dollars, you don't even have to have a bond. You can bid the work. I, I don't, we, we don't do a prequalification for that kind of work now. On our large bids, for the upcoming bids, the five high schools that we're looking at, any major addition and renovation, there's state laws that change, but there again, they have to have the state license, we have to list them on the bid envelope correctly, depending upon the size of the job and what it entails, the envelope is different. If Lynn, Lynn is doing a regular bid, her envelope may only have the, our bid number, Lynn Pater's name, the date, and when it turns in, and what the bid number is. You're doing one of my bids, you got to follow state statute, which is you have to list the mechanical, the electrical, the plumbing, and the HVAC. We require roofing, roofing supplier, and dirtwork. That's an additional requirement that we do. So there is some differences depending upon where you go, but in, none of that's changed in the last ten years, as far as that goes. But i- if you can meet the criteria, we don't eliminate. Now, on the other side of the street, there is a couple of contractors that I don't want to name at this point, I'd be glad to tell you after it's over with, that I've barred from doing work in Rutherford County for us. And the reason being is, I got three schools that I still got issues with, that they're refusing to come back and fix.
Quality of work.
Quality of work. And, and, and it's not the first time that we do it. On our major projects, we do prequalify. Roofing, dirtwork, HVAC, those kind of things, we do prequalify. But it's basically, you follow the AIA three oh five, you submit your forms, you got good stuff, I add you to the list. We've got a list that's super long, electrical, mechanical, all that kind of thing. It's nothing new, we've been doing it for quite some time. If you do a large job, and a large job would be, to me, is a new school, forty million dollar job, you fall on your face. I've been doing this for thirty-five years. Nobody's perfect, anybody can have a bad job. So typically, what I do is take them off the forty million dollar list, and I put them on the twenty million dollar list, and I give them a second chance. They do a cup, do a couple of those jobs, and they do good, then I'll put them back on the forty. They do a couple more twenties, and I get the same thing that I got at forty? I'm sorry, they're not going to work for us.
Understandable.
I, I'm looking out for us as taxpayers now, and, and I'd be glad to give you a name of somebody you can call that got off both those lists, and for three years, I wouldn't let them do work for us. And they called and said, hey, look, we've got some new people here, we'd like another I gave them one chance. They've done great work ever since. I've, I haven't had a problem with them. So, so there are ways, it's not a life sentence, you can get back on. But if you've really hoodooed me, and I got four or five jobs that are terrible, and I got stuff hanging out of the ceiling, and I can't get you to finish, it's going to take a whole lot to get back in, back in to do work for us. Yes, sir?
Thank you. I, I do have one question on this list.
Yes, ma'am.
It says, it's under miscellaneous items, and it just says, high school shop doors and high school shop air.
Yes, ma'am.
What's that for?
We've got a lot of our CTE programs that have changed in the older schools. They used to be auto shop, and they used to be some other things that were outdoor, where you leave the hood, the, the, just, they just opened the door, and there was no heater or air. Some of those classes, we've actually moved a classroom out there with their work class, and it's very difficult to sweat all over your book during the class time and then go do your, your shop time. So we're looking at ways to put air into those shop. We started it last year, we did twelve or fourteen last year, and we're hoping to finish that program up this year. And some of these old doors, or the original doors from either the seventies or the eighties, and there's a chain, I can stand there for ten minutes to roll the door up or roll the door down. We're doing auto, electric doors, so that they push the button and the door goes up, push the button, and it's, it's just a better way to go.
So this, these two items, maybe multiple schools?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions regarding? It's terrifying to look at this number. I was just having a conversation with somebody today, and I commented that we're at a hundred million. So to see that we're a million short of two hundred million in deferred maintenance is beyond terrifying. And, and so I guess there is a question there. What is our plan? Do we have a plan? Have we informed the commission?
Yes. Remember the year before last, we did the energy audit?
Yes.
That's what that was. That, that was.
There's also in the new funding form.
Yes.
If, if appropriated, and, and the system is experienced, I think, two percent growth, then there's additional state funding that will come our way. That's not going to be that much money, though. So it's going to be, but it will help somewhat.
Yes. We're going to have to look for more funding, and, and the, the, we comprehensively started looking at this when Mr. Spurlock put me in this position. It was one of the things that he and I talked about, was trying to get a grasp on this, because it hadn't been comprehensively done prior to that. When I've got equipment that's nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty-two, I mean, most of us are homeowners. I mean, not everybody's blessed like we are, but most of us are homeowners. HVAC system at your house, what, twelve, fourteen years? If you, if you do good maintenance on it, and it's, and in the meantime, you've got a couple of major, oh, my heat, if you got gas, your heat exchanger went out, you know, which is pretty major, but at twelve to fifteen years, you're going to be changing out your air conditioning unit. Our buildings are no different. But they're fifteen to, you start getting around twenty, you start really, start having some problems. And we're there. It's just a process.
Now, is this, this money, I'm going to use the expense term, is most of this money considered expense and not a capital project that you can amortize back into the price of the building? Or is this just an expense item you just have to absorb?
This is, this is just like you and your home. So if you need a new roof at your house, it's the price of being a homeowner versus a renter.
It's not looked at like.
No, sir. It's not.
It's not looked at like what I'll call AR requisition money.
It's like, as Lee says, under this fund, it's modified accrual accounting in that fund, so it's treated as an expense in that fund. So what's budgeted for the project for the year, that's the expense for the year, and if there's carryover, there's carryover, and then next year, hopefully, that's taken out. The, on the government-wide level of the funds, you know, the financial statements, the county will actually, the county finance director department will coordinate with my office, and will actually capitalize that, not in this fund, but on the government-wide funds, which are full of accrual. And that's where it's going to be depreciated, and you'll recognize depreciation through that.
It's looked at as an improvement in the structure or?
In the, yeah.
It's an improvement in the school, so the value will increase, and you could AR that out, right?
Correct, and that's why we, that's why, that's one of the reasons that, because it's a capital improvement, then we can not.
That's what missed me there, because I was thinking a lot of this was more in line with an expense item, where you just got to write the check, you get nothing back other than the, the item itself. But you do roll this into the overall project of the school, and it does allow you to, to recuperate some of this.
I mean, it's, it's, we'll do the depreciation, we'll amortize over the year, but as far as utilizing the funding, I see.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Very good.
Are there, are there grants or programs, energy efficiency grants or anything that we, if we're not already participating in, can we explore to help with this?
Doug is looking at a couple of options. There is what's called the E E S I, which we've done in the past, but they're typically three to four million dollar, things like that, yes. They're one percent, they're usually seven to eight years. They don't typically go any longer than that. They don't typically go any longer than that. That's something that, well, still Doug's thunder, but...
That's, yeah, that. And also, we've been having, Mr. Spurlock and I had sat down and had a meeting with TDEC. They have some recreation grants in other counties that have been able to get fifty percent of the cost of a playground renovation, and that's up to half a million dollars a year on that. So we've been looking at the possibility of seeing if we could, you know, be able to apply for that for a playground. Some of the renovations, since it, a lot of times, they tie it to ADA. And so that might be something in the future we could maybe get eligible for that.
Thank you.
But to really make a, I'll call it a dent in this list and not just keep kicking the can down the road. Our county commission will have to budget money for this to be done, correct? Okay. I mean, that's just the bottom line of cleaning this list up, is they'll just have to say, "Okay, we're going to do this." How long did it take to build this list this big?
Any other questions? Thank you. Next item.
All right, number fifteen, found on tab seven, Plainview Change Order. RG Anderson has submitted a change order number one, which will be final change order for the Plainview project. The change order number one is a deduction of nine-hundred-forty-five-thousand, fifty-five dollars and sixty-three cents. Engineering Construction has reviewed the change order and agrees. The final contract for this project will be forty million, six-hundred-fifty-six-thousand, nine-hundred-forty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Any questions, comments? Next item?
All right, number two, Stewart's Creek Middle Band Storage Building. Principal Tony Murray has requested purchase of a twelve-by-twenty storage building for the band program. The storage building will be purchased for seven-thousand, six-hundred-eighty-two dollars and fifty cents by the Band Booster Club. Engineering and Construction has reviewed the request and approves.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Next item.
All right, number three, CUD Developer Agreement for Rockville Elementary. CUD has submitted a standard developer agreement for signature. This agreement is for new services for the annex at Rockville Elementary. Engineering and Construction has reviewed the agreement and finds it keeping with a standard agreement.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, members of the board? Okay. Next item, sixteen?
Insurance update. I think we went up with that.
Directors update?
Thursday.
Tennessee Legislative Network, Ms. Ma. Okay? Federal as well? Wonderful. Any general discussion this evening? Covered a lot of ground. If there is none, we are adjourned.